All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please note those in attendance?
All will be noted.
Will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll jump into item two, approval of the minutes that entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting from October 28th.
Second.
A motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item three, adoption of the agenda. We have two changes. We're going to move item four C and four E down to new business under eight, so four C will become eight B and four E will become eight C. If there are not any other changes or corrections to the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. The motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Item five A, Public Works Engineering Biannual Report. Mr. Kope, whenever you're ready.
Ah, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight we'll do our biannual report. We're going to jump right into the meat and potatoes of our operations that we do. Mix things up a little bit. We'll start with streets. This go around. So pretty routine year for streets doing kind of their day-to-day activities with throughout the summer months, kind of looking at May through October. Really plays with hours of, or time spent on pavement management, pavement repairs, do paving, pothole filling, do a lot of pavement marking, sign, looking at signs, tree trimming. So this time of the year, they'll get done with their paving and other maintenance operations and they move into tree trimming, getting ready for winter operations. Every year, they drive all of their different routes and trim trees to make sure that they're not hitting their plow equipment, breaking, you know, mirrors off. If you think of driving that big plow truck, those of you who've had the opportunity to do it, if you haven't, let me know and we'll get you in one this winter. But they're, you know, driving down the road and that passenger side is next to the, you know, curb line and, you know, they can't see the branches coming, so they hitting trees, so they want to make sure that they're not doing that. And then they continually do some touch-up street sweeping throughout the summertime, but most of it, like our spring street sweeping gets a lot of that sand and debris off the road. Summer really keeps a lot of the leaves and other woody debris out of our storm sewer system that tend to plug it, that tend to wash into our lakes and wetlands and ponds. So we really want to keep that stuff out, so they basically, starting September through as late as they can go, they sweep until the snow flies and get as many leaves off of the road as possible. So far, they've done almost 300 lane miles throughout. A little bit of that is from the summertime, but the majority is from this fall yet and about just shy of 600 cubic yards of material, so each dump truck is about 10 yards, eight to 10 yards, so quite a few different, quite a few dump truck loads of material. And then this summer, they, I'll start with the last one, they did some more manhole repairs with our sewer department this summer. And then one thing that they did, our guys are getting more and more creative as they can, but the decorative concrete out on Highway 61. They periodically have to put a sealer on it to make sure that it doesn't deteriorate and colors don't fade and things like that. They got a new product that hopefully will last a little bit longer and they were actually able to convince Minna to provide the traffic control for the project, so saving us some money and time and effort on our part. So kudos to the streets department for looking into different options for that. Water division, again, pretty routine overall. The water usage is down a little bit from the last couple of years, by about 10 million gallons. We did have quite a rainy season, so people weren't lawn watering as much and using water outside because we were getting rain. The, they were quite busy with Gopher State One Call Utility Locates, so that's up from about 1,600 the last few years, so quite a few utility locates, different projects going around, both public and private. And then they had some major renovations to the wells, both well and well three and well four got new generators. You would like to see them, they are quite massive, but they keep our water running or will keep that running during storms and things like that. We have gone to a natural gas generators for both of those generators, minimizing maintenance. So the diesel generators, you had them switch from summer fuel to winter fuel, a lot more maintenance, it's dirtier. The natural gas is much cleaner, more efficient. You don't have to worry about refilling them during different storm events, otherwise you have to have fuel trucked in and put in the generator, so kind of more maintenance-free and then we're able to use them for our peak shaving through Excel Energy, so saving us some money on our usage bills during high summertime demand for electricity. And then during our maintenance shutdown this year, they were able to replace a main feed valve into the plant, which was starting to fail and actually, it was planned, but as they turned it off, it failed, so we picked the right time and year to do it, so kind of worked out. Our Parks and Facilities Division, again, like last year, mowing and more mowing, they couldn't seem to keep caught up on that, so as well as a lot of the different special events, park reservations that they did, very busy year out there. And then just kind of the, I call it routine, but you know, plugging on repairs, park repairs. Again, all our hanging baskets and planting beds throughout town that everybody loves so much, so kudos to all the horticulture staff that were out there doing that work. And then this is actually a very fun time for them, once we get into October. They barely get the park shut down, so they winterize the, all the park shelter or the restroom facilities. They blow up the sprinklers, they pull in all the marina docks, the buoys, there are pictures on the screen up there. You know, two lonely guys out there in the fog taking the buoys out and somebody's got to, you know, then they mark them so that they can find them again next year, so. A lot of those kind of things that just kind of go on scene and they get that stuff done. As soon as they get that done, they start decorating for the holidays, so. Next week is already our, will be our annual, second annual gazebo lighting ceremony, so busy getting ready for that with the decorations and the lightings and things like that, so it's a quick turnaround from closing things up to start getting for, ready for the holiday season. This year, a number of projects that were taking place, the Lakewood Hills Trail Project, been fantastically well-received out there by the community and the folks that our park staff run into that are using it, they absolutely love it, so. Turned out to be a wonderful amenity to that park. Marina Gates went up this year. We added a hidden, or a picnic shelter at Hidden Hollow Park and the, had a, quite the ceremony for the speech landing monument that parks helped facilitate, get get a spot for, get the concrete poured and the monument installed, so a lot of planning and effort involved in that. Fleets Division, they keep, their amount of work that they, workload that they have continues to grow. We continue to go up in our preventive maintenance, they try to keep up with that. Major repairs were up, you know, 25 to 50 over the last several years, so they keep doing more and more major repairs to vehicles. That's like brakes or engine work, things like that, not the oil changes, filter changes, so kind of anything out, anything that takes a little bit more. The outside vendor repairs, we track those. Most of those are warranty repairs or things that we'd mentioned before, the bigger equipment, the big fire apparatus that can't go on the lifts in the, in the garage have to be sent out or or specialty work that we don't do in-house, you know, transmission repairs, body work, things like that. And then this year, they are, about every six months, they're doing about 10 or so, 10 to 15 DOT certifications. That makes sure our bigger trucks are all certified to be on the road, that they're in good repair. This time of the year, they're getting all the bigger equipment ready for the plowing season. And then, I mentioned it in the spring, but this year, they, with the police and fire squad outfitting, was a major undertaking by the our two mechanics. If you look on the top picture there, they get a pallet of parts and they turn it into a squad car, so they did two fire squads and they're working on completing four police squads this year, so. Just looking at, they decided to take it in-house, looking at the quality of it, the, the ability to do it in-house and know what is done, so that as they have to maintain these vehicles over the next number of years, they know how it was wired, they know how things were put on, so the, hopefully the repairs are easier. Versus getting it from a third-party vendor, it's hard to trace somebody else's wiring and understand what they did. This is something they did, so they know how it all works. Sewer Division, I like to call these guys the, they are so routine. They really work to keep our sewer system operating so nobody knows they're out there. So they, a lot of what they do is focus on jetting and televising our sewer system, so they go in with a basically a big hose and they clean out all of our sewer lines on a rotating basis and they televise it to make sure there's no cracks or deficiencies in it that might turn into a sewer lining project. And this is the number we all love to see, is zero sewer backup, so that means what they're doing with their jetting and cleaning and televising is paying huge dividends. This year, they did a few bigger projects. They took on rehabbing the Whittaker lift station, a lot of valve repairs in there, they put a new generator. Again, that helps with some of the peak shaving as well as just, it's one of the major lift stations in town to keep people's sewer flowing. That also is a natural gas generator to help prevent or minimize maintenance on it. Routine lift station maintenance, some minor valve repairs, structural repairs, lining, things like that. And then they got to have a little bit of fun. We, the city purchased the, the house next to South Fire and our sewer department got to do a little bit of demolition with the two garages back there that were kind of falling over for safety reasons. Decided to take those down this year and kind of get them out of the way so that nobody got hurt in and around them, so. They got to use it more as a training exercise as well. There's some folks that got to use equipment, learn on the backhoe and the skid steer and things that they don't get a lot of opportunity to do, so. It was a great opportunity for a few days of training on different equipment for staff as well. Public Works Administration, again, besides keeping things going, we really do a lot to help organize the Public Works. We had our second annual Public Works Open House, which is well received once again. Mary Down at Public Works organizes the farmer's market, runs Fridays, June through October, very well received in the community for an ongoing event. And then the Fall Cleanup Day, they help coordinate all of the different vendors and the trash services and the different pickups, so. A huge undertaking above and beyond. One of the pictures you see, the final farmer's market happened to land on Halloween, so a lot of the different vendors, as well as Mary, had some fun, dressed up and and folks who enjoy that as well. Engineering Division, kind of a busy summer for us. In, we started off the season with a 2025 rehab project up on Division and 12th Street by the high school, followed by a midsummer start. Just as we were wrapping up the street project, we started the downtown parking lot project, which the final lot just opened today. A few punchless items with some lighting and, and trees will go in tomorrow, so. Yeah, it was a pretty packed summer for, for the staff. We also did, this is kind of a catch-up from the 2024 Street Project, but the Sports Center Stormwater Swell Project was completed this spring to help meet requirements for stormwater runoff from the 2024 Street Project. Just happened to coordinate better with the Watershed District to get that done this year versus last year. And then other activities that the Engineering Division does, continue with development and house, housing construction project reviews, so we're very closely with the Community Development Department to do reviews on any house and projects that come through their department. We did 59 right-of-way permits. Those are typically private utilities that are doing extensions or repairs within the right-of-way, so that we can manage them and make sure that they're done correctly and things get restored. GIS continues to be, Matt continues to be extremely busy helping not only the day-to-day kind of mapping projects, we re-did the, re-updated the ash tree inventory along with our summer intern to get ready for our EAB removal replacement project coming up. And then they helped, or Matt helped with the zoning code update mapping for the Community Development Department. So a lot of undertaking there. A lot of other little side projects for anywhere from police to community development and fire, so everybody's utilizing them, so it's keeping him busy. We also did Rotary Nature Preserve Restoration Phase Three. Continue working on that with the Rotary Club. And then quite a bit of time spent on the Dog Beach Alternative Location Review. That was presented to council a month or so ago. Finally, just as a reminder, Engineering and Public Works oversee two different commissions or staff liaisons with two different commissions. Environmental Advisory Commission, Connie Talon, is the staff liaison for that. Always doing some different events. They, they got a Fall Trash or Treasure Day, according to this year with the township, again, very well received. They did another Buckthorn Removal Event. They do quite a bit to organize the EEC Environment, Environmental Expo at the Market Fest each year, so again, very well received, very well organized. And then they also attended the Public Works Open House this year. Likewise, myself and Andy Whitticky from our Parks Department, our Parks Foreman, are the staff liaisons with the Park Advisory Commission. They are really our eyes and ears out there in the community. Aside from doing the fun things, they love doing the Arbor Day plantings each year, this year at Hidden Hollow Park, but really, a lot of, a lot of what they've done is public engagement and outreach through not only our Public Works Open House, Market Fest booth that they, the last three or four years now have done, they sit out there for four weeks each, each summer, taking turns to get community input, but they also do park inspections, so they rotate through and, and go through and see the condition of existing amenities, talk to residents and and get their reaction to what they want to see within our park system and, and report that back so that we can prepare appropriate CIP projects, report back to council on different things that the community's seeing, so. Those are the activities that kind of went over the summer months, May through October. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Kope. Appreciate the detailed report. Sounds like you guys had another busy summer. I don't have any questions, I'll just comment that the parking lots look great and exciting to have that done and makes me even more excited for hopefully next summer, Phase Two, with the rest of the downtown reconstruction, so good job with that. Council, any questions for City Engineer? All right. Thank you again. Appreciate it. I think you're up next. Item six, Public Hearings, the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 706 of the Municipal Code Regarding Trees. Mr. Kope.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we will have the second reading and public hearing for the consideration of an amend, an ordinance amending Chapter 706 of the Municipal Code Regarding Trees. So summarizing what we talked about in the first reading, this really originated, or the review of the ordinance regarding trees originated in the fall of 2024, following council acceptance of a Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Shade Tree Bonding Grant. The grant was in the amount of $500,000. We submitted to help with our Emerald Ash Borer issue that we've seen around town. The grant requires that, you know, the trees removed and planted are on unrestricted property. Currently, there was some language nuances within our current ordinance that put the responsibility of boulevard trees on homeowners. And that's the majority of the area that the Emerald Ash Borer has affected those trees, so. That being said, the city started, or our staff and legal staff started to review the ordinance to bring that into compliance, to have the burden taken off of the homeowners and more control or responsibility of boulevard trees to the city, which is pretty common elsewhere. So that being said, besides looking at the, the ownership component of the tree ordinance, we also just looked at general verbiage. It's, I won't say quite outdated, but it hadn't been, really been reviewed since the 70s and 80s as our legal staff had reviewed. But it really adds, you know, in talking with people and outside of just the EAB recommended changes, just a lot of confusion with, confusion with definitions, so we added a definition section to the proposed ordinance. Better define what a hazardous tree is and how to abate them. Our ability to do, or clarified the city's ability to do emergency abatement if needed of hazard trees. And really just clarified how the city can better maintain its ermine canopy within the public rights away, trimming, removal and planting. And then just some deletion of outdated language that just didn't apply anymore or didn't meet current legal standards based on the city attorney's review, so. So tonight, staff would recommend that city conduct the second hearing of the ordinance amending the City's Code Regarding Trees, hold a public hearing and consider adoption of the ordinance amending the city code. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kope. I will open up the public hearing for anyone who would like to be heard on the ordinance amendment to Chapter 706. I do not have any names on my list, but if anyone would like to speak to this issue, you can step forward at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Council, do we have questions for Mr. Kope or would someone like to move approval of the ordinance? Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you. Mr. Kope, over the summer, I believe we had an intern and potentially well, and potentially others surveying the portions of the community that were included in our EAB grant. My recollection is that the $500,000 grant includes removal as well as replanting a certain amount and portions of mostly in Ward Three, some in Ward Four, some in Ward Five. Do you have a sense of how many trees in the that would be covered by this ordinance that will be removed as a result of, of the EAB funding?
So just kind of, just kind of generalize, so when the city first did a, back in 2018, the ash tree inventory, there were approximately 1,700 trees that were identified on the boulevard, ash trees, and about 300 in the parks, in round numbers. As part of this grant, we anticipate about 350 of those trees can be replaced. That's more, that's less than what is actually in those two areas, but we anticipate, as we have worked through, as I explained at the first reading, the water gremlin replanting and we anticipate that there'll be people willing and unwilling to, to work with us, so we're within the grant application identified those two areas, knowing that we would have additional trees to choose from, but pretty confident in that 350 or thereabouts, depending on bids, that's our estimate based on going out and talking to several tree contractors, as well as the tree trust who does the tree planting, to kind of do some estimates as far as what the removal and replacement would be to kind of meet that $500,000 grant threshold, so we backed into that and we get about 350 trees that we believe that we can take care of as part of the grant.
Are all those on citizen properties on boulevards in the targeted area described in the grant?
So the areas that are targeted, would targeted within the grant are, so we looked at, so the grant application of the grant requirements, you have to look at certain aspects of demographics, different criteria that you have to meet in order to be a successful grant applicant. So we were successful at those two areas that seemed to meet the targeted criteria within the grant application. And based on that, that's what was submitted, that's what.
You're describing the area that was described in the grant application for which we were successful. Kudos, that's good. I'm trying to get at how many trees in citizen yards, i.e. in boulevards, ballpark, are we talking about? Being, being taken, being removed with this funding?
That's a 350. So that's, that's what we think based on the funding and the cost estimates that we received, we think we can do 350. And the grant was, so the, one of the criteria within the grant is they have to be on public property. They cannot be on private property, so anything that's within people's private yards are not eligible for grant funding. The two areas that most cities have control over are boulevards or parks, so. The majority of, you know, as I explained earlier, the majority of the trees that we have an issue with for, that have been affected by Emerald Ash Borer are the 1,700 within the, within the streets area or the boulevard area versus the, about 300 within the parks area.
I'm satisfied that that's a good number for removal from our neighborhood. My recollection, the area is approximately White Bear Avenue to Bel Air, F to E. Am I in the general area?
Yep.
Okay. Clearly, we have a whole lot of other city boulevards that are not going to be paid for with grant funds and we're going to have to figure out something else for those areas, but a purpose for this, for this ordinance was to make it eligible for us to include those residential trees in the, to be able to use these funds to support that. I wanted to start by noting, we have 90 miles of streets in this city. 5,280 feet per mile, 10 feet minimum of right-of-way on either side, that's 20 times 5,280 times 90, and you divide that by 43,560 feet, square feet per acre. We're, we've got a, we are taking over the management of over 200 acres of land, which makes it by far our, our biggest park. This is a substantial undertaking and the conditions become, are proportional. So number one, this is a big deal. It's not a, it's not a little thing and it's not just in one neighborhood. I have some concerns, but my primary, about language, and we'll get to that in a moment, but a couple of the items specifically are the actions that, that need to be taken for hazardous trees, which may or may not be the same as dying trees. So I'm going to guess, Mr. Anderson, that you were involved in drafting this, the ordinance? Okay, so when, when we define a hazardous tree, included and not limited to dying trees, does that make a dying tree synonymous with a hazardous tree and synonymous with a public nuisance, or could you? Or could you could you tease out that language for us, please?
Sure. Councilmember Edberg. So mayor and council, I think the question is, for the definition of hazardous tree, what what does it mean? It's really any tree and and the point is to say whether it's diseased, dying, or any other tree that because of its condition poses a likelihood of property damage or personal injury. And those determinations, like any public nuisance definition, would be made by staff and their professional judgment based on the condition of a tree. So to answer your question, it could be a dying tree, it could be a diseased tree, but the main point is that the condition of the tree poses a likelihood of property damage or or personal injury.
So according to that definition, how big a likelihood? In one section, we talk about trees that are that are an imminent danger to public health and that justify a certain action to go onto private property, ideally with homeowner or landowner approval, but if not, there's a mechanism for that because of the imminent danger. How do we? The council is is delegating authority to staff. What boundaries might we want to think about on that on the delegation of power? And I'll give you a couple of examples. Not all dying trees become hazardous immediately. Not all a flag branch can be remedied with pruning. If not, if left unchecked, it may it may die, it may become hazardous, but just because it shows the signs of potentially being in poor health, doesn't necessarily make it hazardous in the real world. How do we? All right, I'm going to leave that for the side for the moment. The second concern, the financial impact on our on our homeowners from aggressive use of this of this ordinance is significant. At our last council meeting, we talked about Mr. Kope said that the bids that we have been getting have been in the vicinity of $2,000 removal cost per tree. Now, how we're going to do 350 trees with 500,000, that's that's less than 200,000. I don't know how that math works out, but that's okay. We can leave that leave that to the side. Chalk that up to scale of scale of operations. Most Americans, it's when well reported, have way less than $1,000 in their savings account. If we're going to hit them with a $2,000 abatement cost for the loss of a tree on their property and give them 45 days to act and have that completed, we are at risk, I think, of imposing a significant financial barrier. I do note that the policy permits a couple of good things. Number one, it's discretionary, but there's an ability to have the have the debt, especially if the city performs it, to put on the property taxes and amortize over 10 years. And there's a senior citizen. They get to certify it and and hold it and it's paid when when the property, thank you, deferral, thank you. And it's it gets paid, it just gets paid when the property changes hands presumably after they die, move into the home, whatever, whatever that situation is. I'm trying to figure out, given the the scale of the tree removal issues that we have in place, whether 45 days is the right number because we haven't established that all dying trees, for example, aren't necessarily hazardous trees yet. They may be on that way, and I'm not trying to frustrate that. I'm saying if when it comes to the implementation of this, great care needs to be taken because it's expensive. Folks may not have those nickels squirreled away for tree removal, and I think greater timeline and greater options are necessary. One specific timeline conversation is from the time that the city sends a notice to a homeowner that you have an issue, they have that's the date of the notice, when it's sent, when it's up in the corner. And then they have seven days. Now, it's not seven business days, it's seven calendar days, which is at least a couple of weekends in there. And I don't know about anybody else, but I don't trust the U.S. Postal Service to give us the traditional two to three day turnaround. And then if there's anything else, like somebody's not checking their mail, they are on vacation, blah, blah, blah. It's like, I just don't think that's realistic in today's world, given the communication systems that we are relying on. So I'm thinking there is need for us to have some conversation about exactly what are the ends and how rapidly do we seek to achieve them and how does that get reflected in the timelines that are in the ordinance? So I'm kind of laying all that out. I am not objecting to the ordinance per se. I am saying, given the state of the of the Emerald Ash Borer issue, and that's the that's majority of it, but it's not the only, there are other species that have other issues and we just have dead and dying trees of other species as well. I'm just saying, we need to be more thoughtful in how we structure the timelines, the expectations and the payment obligations and how we how we impose those. Now, if I'm the only one on the council that has affordability of of our services as a concern, fine, I'll wear that. If that's a concern, I suggest we, as a council, have that conversation about what are we really trying to do and how how do we seek to achieve attainment of this goal of removing trees over time? I'll stop.
Good questions, Councilmember Edberg. And maybe I can, if anything, put put you your mind at ease about what we're accommodating or accomplishing with this ordinance. First of all, the the language, the way we've defined hazardous tree is intended to give staff the ability to take action when they deem there's a situation that endangers public health, safety or welfare when it comes to trees. What I will tell you is the language we have in here now about likelihood of of property damage or injury is actually narrower than the the definition you have in your code today. So it actually makes that, in my opinion, a less of an issue from the standpoint of do we trust staff to implement this ordinance or not? Right now, the city code defines any tree, living, dead, or any part thereof which may be considered a threat to the public welfare. What does that mean? But what I'll say is it's good to have some flexibility in this language because you don't know what's going to happen with tree A, tree B, tree Z at any point in time. So to be able to give staff some ability to look at a situation and determine, does it fit that definition or not, is a good thing. But what I would say is the language here that talks about likelihood of property damage or injury is much more narrow than which may be considered a threat to public welfare. That's the current language. That is the standard we could look at today. Call it a public nuisance and require someone to remove it. The second point that it's worth making, based on your concern about the current language and how much time someone has, today, if we deem it a public nuisance, staff gives them 21 days. This ordinance, I pointed it out last time, council member, it actually goes up to 45 days for them to actually act to remove the tree, assuming it's not an emergency that would require imminent action by the city. So we're providing, again, less concern in that respect in this new language than we have in the existing ordinance. And then third, that seven day language that you mentioned, I I of course defer to council on all the language, but that one in particular, you raise a good point about the mail. I think everyone's probably noticed lately or in the last handful of years that you send something and it doesn't show up maybe for a few days or a few weeks in some instances. But that seven days isn't intended to say you have to remove a tree by then. It's it's the appeal period, which they're provided an opportunity to appeal within seven days, the city's determination that the tree is hazardous. Today, our code has no appeal language in it. So if we decide it's a public nuisance under the language I mentioned before that currently exists, there's no language in here that affords a homeowner the right to be able to challenge that, at least with the city. Maybe they could take certain action under under law or go seek review by a district court or something, seek injunctive relief, but there's no appeal right for them in the current code that that we're including with that seven day language. So that's the only intent of that language, but if there's a desire to make it 10 days or two weeks, just to ensure that the person received the mail and has the opportunity to contact the city and make an appeal if they disagree, I think that's perfectly fair, just knowing how the postal postal services operates, so.
So I would respond in part by saying, the the current ordinance that hasn't been used for 30 years or that was created coming out of Dutch elm, all right? And that that's where clearly where the language is is in several sections, specific to that disease, which was it was a big deal. I'm not, I don't think that's the right standard. I don't think our the revision goes far enough. I appreciate that an appeal was added, but if it's only if they've got seven days and we're relying on the postal service to give them their days, I don't think that's adequate. And if we they do not appeal within seven days, they are not guaranteed their appeal rights. And I don't think that that's a very useful, citizen-friendly approach. So I'm suggesting we at least look at that. 45 days, I don't know, has anybody gone out and tried to hire a tree trimmer in 45 days? And have you and were we able to get 40 get a turnaround in 45 days? I think we're we're talking in today's market, given the scope of this emergency in other places, that 45 days is an unreasonable, impractical standard under current current industry conditions. Now, if it's imminent, if there's an imminent danger, yes, let's do that. But in the absence of an imminent hazard, I suggest we extend that even farther than the 20 that used to be in the 45 that's in the draft, because the the ability to get a tree trimmer into your neighborhood for an individual removal ain't going to happen in 45 days. And we will have people automatically not in compliance with statute or with ordinance. So we need to think through the practicality and the workability of the of the standard.
On the seven days, those are reasonable points extended, call it 10 days, call it 14 days, that's fair. That I don't think that's the biggest issue. It sounds like of the concerns you outlined, they've largely gone unaddressed for 30 or 50 years, depending on how far back this one goes, and this is a huge improvement. So that's a good thing. As for the 45 days, I would take the other side of the the position. This will be used in situations where it needs to be, there's an imminent threat, and the the city staff has a history of not being unreasonable when it comes to these things. The city staff has has engaged with our citizens and have been able to exercise their discretion in seeing, for example, an honest effort and the pinch point being, I can't line up a tree contractor. And in those situations, like in others, outside of land use that has very hard state law statutory timetables, to grant extensions where needed. So I'd be concerned going the other way and saying, well, it's just 90 days and then allowing that drift to inevitably happen. So the 45 days, to me, seems reasonable under most normal circumstances, to the extent that there are extenuating circumstances, you truly can't find a tree contractor. I have every confidence in the world that city staff will evaluate the resident on the merits and and see that they're making an honest effort and grant extensions and be flexible, as they have with what has been a more tight ordinance with regard to the discretion that the city could exercise and hasn't. They could have been tighter.
We haven't because we don't have the staff to do it and it's been a low priority. We just haven't, we've only recently begun paying attention. We've gone 30 years without paying attention to our urban forests and we have not gotten around it. We still do not have dedicated staff to urban forestry and the the issues of our trees. So the fact that we don't, we haven't done it isn't because we're being nice. Now, I would I would.
Hang on, just I just want some clarity on that. We haven't done it because we haven't had the staff. Those are, I guess, those are two different things. I want to track with that because that's that's a bold assertion. So you're saying, but for if we had more city staff, then we would be less flexible with our residents and be clamping down?
I'm saying that this has the whole issue of urban forestry has not been an issue of great concern to staff or to the the community until recently, when it has been becoming very evident. And that's so we just kind of haven't made it a priority. That's all I'm saying. I would I would go with the an inclusion of some language about the explicit authority for staff to grant extensions on the 45 day, that might be reasonable, but something that gets at this reasonability. Now, again, this is a conversation for the council and other council members may disagree and I'm totally fine with that.
Councilmember Hughes.
I would say about a neighbor who felt the pinch of the.
Yes.
I will tell you, I had a neighbor who felt the pinch of the 20 days and was very upset by them. I recently tried to get some tree trimming done and I called in June and it happened last week. No, I didn't have a dead tree, but it was a distinct problem. What they would do with the pinch 20 20 days, though, is ultimately you just go to the the guy that's willing to come out and charges you three times the price in order to get rid of the tree. So I am definitely for an extension and I think, I don't know that 90 days is necessarily unreasonable, depending on what's happening, but I agree that 45 days is at least a necessary stopping or starting point and that that could be even farther. I think, you know, this particular neighbor's tree had a hollow spot in it and it had been like that for a number of years and hadn't been checked and wasn't no danger of doing any damage. And and then when it was found and tagged, they had 20 days to take care of something that didn't appear to have any kind of imminent threat involved at all and probably could have gone a full 90 days before needing to be dealt with.
Councilmember West.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the kind of magic number of days is, but I'm wondering if there's language that could be included about the extension process or being that the city staff could provide an extension with extenuating circumstances. I mean, we kind of use that sort of language when there's practical difficulties in when we do things with zoning. So I'm just wondering if it's a little bit like that, like if there is a practical difficulty in getting somebody to manage a tree, then staff can work with the person.
Any other comments? So on Councilmember West's suggestion, I assume to our city attorney, we could add something in there, some language that provides some sort of a discretionary extension, whatever that might be, just to provide some flexibility to address those circumstances.
Yes, mayor and council, I think that works, assuming it makes sense from public work staff. I mean, I I think I'm hearing maybe something to the extent of 45 days or additional time and the discretion of staff if the property owner is making reasonable efforts to engage with a contractor. I mean, again, I think I defer to the folks that are going to be boots on the ground on this, but go ahead.
Thank you, City Attorney Anderson, mayor members of the council. If that's the desire, I would I would recommend tabling this so we can have time to think about it because we're we're supposed to be talking about hazardous trees. We're not, we're not talking about trees that don't need attention, whether it's a limb or the entire tree. So if that's the desire, then I would request that staff have one, a couple more weeks to evaluate that. The last thing that we want, truthfully, is more time when it's a hazard, when it's a truly hazardous tree. So I would, if there's a consensus among the council on that, I would at least request that you table that so we can really get some thoughtful energy rather than kind of quickly drafting something at the dais tonight.
So is the consensus of the council that that 45 days is too short and that we need some mechanism for an extension? We haven't heard from from everyone or are others satisfied with the ordinance as currently written and proposed?
I'm swayed by the arguments.
So let's, I mean, we can table it and and give it some more thought, but we'd we'd need some direction to our city attorney for what it is we're talking about. So if 45 days, is 45 days okay, provided that there is some sort of a ability to extend? And then what does that look like at the discretion of city staff?
I would be satisfied with 45 days and then similarly, as long as, you know, if there was, if they needed more time, it would be, they'd have to be doing good quality touches. But also, not to back up the conversation, would like more than seven days on that. And we haven't really negotiated what, how many days that is that we need to get through the mail.
I would agree the good faith effort on the part of homeowners and then. I would agree the good faith effort on the part of homeowners, and then allow that discretion to, to govern what extensions might be necessary, something along those lines. But yes, I want the homeowner demonstrating good faith. There needs to be motion. If it's an imminent issue, let's take care of those, but the ones that are not in imminent danger, which I believe is a standard we've used in one portion of the, of the language, provide time to reasonably find a contractor that is going to offer a reasonable deal and be available.
City Attorney Anderson, is that enough to go on? Do you want a little more guidance? Maybe you can see what, what other mechanisms we can borrow from for what, what an extension period looks like. Maybe it doesn't have to be a prescribed amount, it's just open-ended, you know, provided there's continuing good faith from the resident, something to that effect. What do you think?
Yes, I mean, I think we can work with that. I can work with staff, too, on something that makes sense. We're kind of threading a needle, but we can make that work and bring something back that, from what I'm hearing, will appease the council. And in terms of the appeal period, are we thinking ten, fourteen? I mean, keep in mind that if we send that notice, the homeowner's gonna have, or property owner's gonna, going to have forty-five days at least to take care of the issue unless it's an imminent issue. So there's no real practical problem giving them an extra week to appeal. So I, I'm comfortable with, from a legal standpoint, with whatever the council is comfortable with.
So does fourteen days strike the council as reasonable? Okay. So we've got the notice period, an appeal right regarding hazardous trees, trees deemed hazardous. Are there any other amendments that council would like to see? Councilmember Walsh.
Uh, no amendment. Just before we table this, just, and I, at the risk of not being germane to the, to the ordinance, we're talking about trees, we're talking about Emerald Ash Bore, we talked about the grant, which got a little bit off track from the ordinance, the grant to do the, the first group of trees. Just an opportunity to communicate, we have money, and just remind me now, we have money in the budget for 2026 planned to spend on tree removal and replacement, Emerald Ash Bore, correct? And then just sort of talk about, maybe just give this opportunity, because we're talking about trees, to say, what's the next phase? You know, we got, it was great that we got the grant, great job writing the grant, getting the grant to handle the first piece, but that only handled three hundred and fifty trees out of the two thousand, so what's the plan for, for the future on this?
Mayor members of the council, so councilmember Walsh, you are correct, there is, I believe in 2026, there is $140,000 budgeted for tree removals and replacements. Some of the money is also, will be dedicated, once we get going on the grant process. There's a few items that are not included, some of the restoration items are not eligible under the grant. So, so a little bit of that is gonna be used for some of those activities. The remainder of it would be to go into other areas, and similar level that we're doing with the grant, start doing systematic removal and replacement of trees in other areas throughout town. The two areas that we submitted through the grant process were, if you look at the map, I don't have it up on the screen or with me, but they are the most dense, if you look at it from the inventory, they are the most dense, densely populated with ash trees than any other parts of town. Most of the rest of town is sporadic, there's, each block's got a couple of ash trees. These are like full city blocks, that's all they are, ash trees. Following Emerald, or Dutch elm disease, as councilmember Edberg had mentioned, ash was a very popular hardy species that grew very quickly, and people glommed onto it and started planting them. Maples were, maple was another one, they haven't been hit with any kind of disease quite yet. Oaks weren't very popular, because they take so long to grow, people love them, but they're, so that is very densely populated, just due to the timeframe that it was developed, and that happened to be the tree of choice at the time. Under normal circumstances, they are a good boulevard tree, but they got hit with EAB, so.
So $150,000 for next year to add to the $500,000, really not a huge amount of money to make a dent in this problem. It's gonna be multi, multi-years of, of putting money in the budget to come around and get Emerald Ash Bore trees out of people's yards that, that need to be replaced, so, but just good to communicate. And if you, if it's time, I can offer a motion to table the ordinance.
I have a motion to table this to the next council meeting, is that enough time? Okay, motion second. Any further discussion on this? And just to clarify, we've had those, the two points, the notice period and an extension period for the forty-five days. That's what we'd like to see come back. All right, so I have a motion, a second to table this for draft commensurate with what we've discussed here at the dais. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The ordinance is tabled, definitely until the next meeting.
All right, item seven, unfinished business, the tobacco license review of MNJ Tobacco. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The memo in your packet on this item includes a recommendation from staff, including myself, to, to table this item to November 25th, based on a request from the licensee and his attorney. Since that memo was published, the city's actually been asked by licensee's attorney for some data related to the business and the past conduct and things like that, so that they can have that information prior to the council's review of the license. Staff is processing that data request, it just came in at the end of last week. Of course, Tuesday was a holiday, I know staff's diligently working on that, but it is fair to provide that information to them certainly, before we review and make a decision. So I'm just sort of reiterating and emphasizing the recommendations to, to table this item until the 25th of November.
No, that makes sense. It sounds like it's not quite right, but it will be later on this month, so I would entertain a motion to table this to the next city council meeting. A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This matter is tabled until the November 25th council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Item eight, A, conditional use permit and variance at 4350 Centerville Road, Twin Cities Towing. Mr. Lindell.
Thank you, Mayor members of the planning commission, excuse me, members of the council. Sorry, old habits.
Demoted.
I'm sorry, you just threw me with that one. So, as you mentioned, the application tonight is from Twin Cities Transportation and Recovery. They're requesting these applications for the property at 4350 Centerville Road. As you can see in the map on the screen, the property is located on the west side of 35W, or, 35E, I'll get it right here in a second, just south of the 35E and ninety, Highway 96 intersection. The conditional use permit is for the vehicle towing service facility itself. The variance in question is for, is to vary from the minimum lot size standard that's included in the list of conditions in the conditional use permit, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that here as we move along. Throughout the review of this application, there were three comments generally opposing the project, and those three people also spoke at the planning commission, and summary of that conversation is included in your packet. One result of that conver, of the testimony at the planning commission was an additional requirement that's included in the resolution for the conditional use permit to add additional screening around the property, as was the concerns of those present at the planning commission meeting. Recommendations for this application, the planning commission and staff are in agreement on recommending approval of the conditional use permit. However, staff and the planning commission differ on the variance. So the staff originally recommended denial of the variance, but the planning commission chose to recommend approval of that request. So just a quick, a couple of visuals to let you know what the site looks like. The site was originally a auto emissions site, it has, was, has been dormant for a number of years, but had a few uses since that program went away with the state. This is a rendition, a rendering of how the site would look, using the existing building, some slight modifications to the parking lot, where vehicles would be stored, that area would be surrounded by fence for screening and security purposes. This gets you a look at the front of the building with how it would look. Again, note the significant fence screening along the right side of this image, which is, would be around the parking and storage area. Similarly, the backside of the building, you're seeing the fencing on either side, and, and how the building would be incorporated into that parking and storage area. So again, the recommendations, as I just talked about, the conditional use permit, both staff and the planning commission recommend approval. The variance in this case, the planning commission recommended approval, and staff recommended denial of that application. Just some quick background on the site and the analysis that was done, the property is located, or, excuse me, is guided by, as business park in the 2040 future land use map and the comprehensive plan. It's located in the newly created industrial mix or IX zone as part of the zoning update that was done over the summer. As part of the conditional use permit criteria for this use, there are fifteen general standards that are reviewed. Those are detailed in your staff report, they generally relate to things like where these uses are located in town, the minimum lots, or the lot area standards for the build, or for the use, a minimum building size, which is the third one there, which is the one that's in question here tonight, how the storage area is located and screened, the amount, the length of time that vehicles can be stored, some general prohibited activity like the sale of parts or salvaging of parts and that kind of thing, and then screening and outdoor activity standards. The analysis also noted that there, it's basically, within White Bear Lake, there are commercial or office warehouse uses around this site, 35E to the east, and then across Centerville Road to the west is residential in Vadniss Heights. And then adequate parking and, and for the site. So the conditional use permit standards that are detailed in your staff report, again, you see consistency from both staff and the planning commission on agreeing with those standards. The asterisk would be by the third standard there, complies with the zoning, does, does the application comply with zoning? The planning commission agreed with that by granting the variance. Staff agreed with that standard by maintaining that the applicant just need to, needed to meet the minimum five percent building area, which would constitute basically adding about a four hundred and fifty square foot addition. Looking at the specifics of the zoning, or, excuse me, the variance standard, we're talking about, in the conditional use permit standard, there is included a minimum five percent building area standard, which is what's in question here for the variance. The applicant and their existing building constitutes 4.12% of the site, so we're really talking about point eight percent, or again, about a four hundred and fifty square foot size of the building. The applicant's statements in support of the variance, which the planning commission supported, had to do with finding a practical difficulty on the site, based on the fact that there is a flagged shape to the lot, that outlined in the access area of the flag portion here in the boulder part of the driveway, is an easement also that allows access to both that, this site and the site to the north, and that if you just looked at the usable, the portion of the lot, or the portion, excuse me, not usable, that, but is actually not part of the flag, if you looked at just that portion of the lot, the building would actually constitute just over five percent of the site. So looking at the criteria for variance, again, the standard of measurement here has, is, has the applicant demonstrated that these criteria are applicable to this application? And again, planning commission found that they did agree, that it was within harmony with the purpose intended of the ordinance, that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan, the property was being used in a reasonable manner, and that there was a unique circumstances to the property, again, the flag shape of the lot, and that it would also not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So with that, again, there's agreement from, from the planning commission and staff on the conditional use permit and recommending approval. There is disagreement between the planning commission and staff with the planning commission recommending the council approve the variance request. The resolutions for consideration and the motions before you tonight are based on the planning commission's recommendation for approval, and have been adjusted to reflect the planning commission's findings related to the variance. The staff's findings were really detailed in the staff report and available for your consideration and discussion, if that's the, the, the choice of the council tonight. But again, what I wanted to emphasize for you is the two motions before you tonight represent both approvals of the conditional use permit and the variance as recommended by the planning commission. And with that, I'd stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lindell. Before we jump into questions and deliberate, the applicant is here, you had a public hearing at the, at the planning commission, so there's nothing formal, but if you wanna say anything that might help us make a decision, you're more than welcome to have the floor. No obligation, but we wanna hear from you if you, if you have words to say. Yeah, and if you could just state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, my name's Josh Vadniss. Address currently is 1720 Mulholland Drive, Lido Lakes. Spoke at the planning commission as well. I'm with Twin Cities Transport and Recovery, as a district manager, formerly with Vadniss Towing for a very long time. Basically, the, the issue for us is just the, the usable space of the lot there, right? It's got the long flag, lead-in driveway with the easements, making that, that space there somewhat unusable, and that total counts against us for the building size ratio. There is another metric in the, in the code for the CUP to control the size of the building to the size of the outdoor space, which is what the building size, lot size is intending to do, too. I believe the building can only, the outdoor storage area can only be six times the footprint of the building, and currently, the proposed outdoor storage area is two, right? So the challenge for us is that we have this, this lot that is ideal for us, with this long driveway, we don't need to be out on the street for the public, but the challenge for us is that that part counts against us, then, for the building size. The majority of our business is done off-site in the field, we're out helping customers on the side of the roadway, maybe in a parking lot, broke down with their car, something like that, so additional size of building is not, is not going to help us. Just one correction, Jason, it was about eight hundred square feet, I believe, wasn't it? Would be the addition size, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if I misspoke, it's about eight hundred and fifty square feet.
So our intent is to repurpose a building that has somewhat been underutilized in the recent years, and kind of gotten into disrepair, so we're hoping to revitalize it. Part of the, like, the vestibule that you decided to take off, because it's not ADA compliant, trying to upgrade it to make it accessible for everyone, and bring a little bit of life back to it, into that area, with the goal being that we are a good neighbor to, to the businesses next to us, good neighbor to those in the community. Historically, that's, that's what it's been, and we're very proud of that.
I just have one quick question, if you, if you don't mind. So if you were forced to add eight hundred and fifty square feet, just to check all the boxes in order to utilize this, is there any real actual use that you would have for it, or are you putting up square footage just for the sake of checking this box?
It would be just for the sake of checking this box, right? We're not looking to house a bunch of vehicles inside the building, we're not looking to work on trucks out of the building, we're, the trucks would be parked in the three bays that are currently there, because they're there, right? they're there, right? Nice to keep them warm. Our drivers would be happy to get into a warm truck, not have to brush it off with a snow brush before we went on the call. So it, it, there wouldn't be an advantage to us to do that. We would just be meeting that requirement.
And to clarify, the intent is that this would then move the location that's currently on Bald Eagle Ave that's been operating there for some time. So it gets it out of a towing operation in a pretty residential area to now what is much more of a commercial area of the city. Is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's one of the things, you know, we do have a current lease at the other property that we would like to, to continue until it ends. However, at that time, right, once we were able to get the property at 4350 ready so that we could actually work out of there, we would transfer most everything to that location in order to, to have that be our main area.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Vadniss? Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
All right, thank you.
All right. If counsel has questions for Mr. Lindell, just punt for one second. I just, I want to clarify with our city attorney, because the variance thing is kind of this, this squishy issue of, you know, what's, what's within our discretion, what's not, and I think it's very important to make sure that we're staying kind of within the left lateral, left legal lateral and right legal lateral. So my question for the city attorney is, are there facts on the record, as you see them, that we have some flexibility regardless of which way it goes, to still be in a defensible position for the city?
Your, I was going to say, your honor, speaking of old habits die hard.
Honor, I mean, it's not going to bother me at all. I kind of like it.
I was in court this morning, so I'm used to it. Mayor and counsel, you know, the, the practical difficulty standard, it's, it's relatively new in the legal sense because it's only been around for what, 10 or 15 years, but it's a three-factor test. We've, you know, Mr. Lindell summarized the reasonableness, the uniqueness, the essential character elements nicely in his, his materials. It's not a cut and dry standard. It's a quasi judicial review, meaning the council needs to apply the facts of, of a variance to the standard, and if it fits, you can grant it, and if it doesn't, you can deny it. But there's, there's gray area there. There's, with any situation when it comes to land use and property, everything's very unique, and city councils are generally afforded quite a bit of deference when it comes to their decisions on land use applications like this. There's a record here that the planning commission analyzed it carefully and came up with a recommendation that suggests that it, it meets that task and can be approved. And so I think the council has the ability and flexibility to make that decision based on how it feels with the record in front of it.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Counsel, do we have questions for Mr. Lindell or comments on this? Councilmember West.
Yeah, I just, could you bring back the slide that has the council, or the staff versus the planning commission? Yes, that. So it is, to my recollection, quite unusual that the planning commission would agree on all the things and the staff would disagree on all the things, correct?
Mayor, members of the council, I, I think it was fair to say that it, just generally, it's, it's unusual for the planning commission and staff to have different recommendations, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I'm wondering if you, because you were there, if there is a, kind of a quick explanation for what really was the, kind of the main factor in their conversation for planning commission that was like, okay, this makes sense to us?
Mayor, members of the council, I think the, I tried to touch on this, and I'm sorry, I'll emphasize it again for you, but I would, I would say, and I hope the applicant is, is in agreement that I'm reiterating their position correctly, but as Mr. Vadniss said when he came up and staff said earlier, the, the planning commission looked at this application and supported the applicant's position that the flag shape, nature, the flag shape of the lot limits the size of the area that's usable to them. So they chose to look at the 5% minimum standard in the, for building area, more based on the usable space of the lot. Because flag lots are, you know, unusual, they, they then found that there were really, you know, unique cer, unique circumstances for this property that supported granting the variance. They also supported the applicant's position that the easement over the flag area further limited the use of that property. Now, the easement itself just provides access to the property to the north, so it's an easement between those two private parties for shared access. But it, but it was primarily the planning commission's decision that they, they supported the applicant's position that there was unique characteristics of this lot that prevented it from really meeting the standards and that then, they then supported the variance.
So let's tease that out for a second. There's an easement over what we'll call the pole part of the flag lot, right? Can they build on that?
Well, mayor and members of the council, no, they couldn't.
Good. Right, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to paint a picture for how plausible the argument is of, it's a flag lot and you couldn't fairly build on that. I understand it's not how our code is written. It's just you take the square footage and it's a percentage, and we're 0.88% off, so we're pretty close to what is already a pretty small percentage. You know, it's not like our expectation is 50% as in, you know, other, maybe parts of the, the code. Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, questions on this? Councilmember Walsh.
Well, thank you. I was going to ask for the same slide to come up because I was surprised to see, then I'm rereading your memo. So you're, you're really putting a lot of work into the, the 5% lot coverage requirement, and you're, you're kind of using that to disagree with everything else up there. I guess my question is, what's, can you just, it is a little bit in the memo, I think at the end, I think I read it somewhere, I couldn't find it again, but maybe you can just articulate, what's the interest? What's the state's interest, the city interest in, in this requirement at all? Why do we care that the lot, the building has to be 5% of the lot? Can you just help me articulate that a little bit?
Yeah, mayor, members of the council, so to give you maybe just a little bit more context, and I'll get there as quick as I can, I'll try. So the, as I, as I mentioned before, the IX, our industrial commercial mixed district, is newly established in the zone, in the, in the new zoning code, and this use is also newly established. Prior to the new code, in the city, there were no standards for towing service facilities like the applicant has. Their existing play, their existing location in town predates the city's zoning completely. So they are the textbook example of a grandfathered use, okay? And so when we noticed these conditions and heard from the applicant, we worked with them to draft standards into the new code, and we used existing vehicle-related businesses in towns and, and our standards for those. For example, if you look at things like car dealerships and our standards for those, we include historically, not just in the new code, in the previous code, historically, we had a standard that car dealerships provide a minimum 10% building. Now, looking at that, and the reason for the minimum size of the building is to try to avoid situations where people just use property within town for storage of vehicles, and there really isn't much tax base or job, jobs for the community. So in an effort to try and promote jobs and tax base, we placed minimum, minimum, I would emphasize, building size standards to help support those goals. And in an acknowledgement that, that Mr. Vadniss raised, that they don't need the same amount of space as a car dealership, for example, because they don't have customers coming in, negotiating deals, they don't have commercial vehicle repair operations where people are getting their vehicles repaired and the like, that, so we low, so we created the new standard and essentially cut it in half. But again, attempted to put into the ordinance some support for a minimum lot size for tax base and jobs. Now, again, to Mr. Vadniss, the applicant's credit, he mentioned that the ordinance not only comes at it from a minimum lot size standard, but also sets a standard that there's a ratio to building size and outdoor storage area to balance those things. And it is six times the lot area, and in this case, again, the applicant is correct. They really only have about twice the size of their building.
Right, so, so the answer is, we're going to, we want to limit storage. We want to limit the eyesore, the, the, it would be, the, the interest for the city perspective is we don't want a lot full of stuff, dirt, cars, something, you know, so that's, that's the, I was trying to get at the, the reason for the, the rule. I'm not convinced. There's, there's a lot of good here. The, in, the, the moving, moving, moving from the neighborhood out to this location is really good, really good. I'm not, I'm not concerned about that they're off by 0.8% on the, on the variance. I would absolutely support the planning commission decision here. We know what the use is going to be. I'm not worried about the, the, the interest of it's going to be a lot full of cars or a lot full of stuff that we don't like. It's a nice fenced-in area. They're going to have cars there for sure as they tow them, as they come and go, but I'm not bothered by this at all, so I'm ready to support the, what's in front of us, which is the planning commission recommendation.
Is that a motion, Bill?
If it's, if you're ready for that, then yes, absolutely. Now, the first, I think there's two votes, so I'll just move whatever the first one is in the packet.
So I have a motion and a second on the resolution. Let me find a red. There's only one resolution here, the CUP. Motion, second on the conditional use.
Mayor, council, excuse me, if you look on the other side of your packet, the other page, the first, the first motion, I'm sorry, I can bring this back up, relates to the variance, and procedurally, that's just to make sure that we're taking, if we're granting a variance from the standard within the conditional use permit, that we have a mechanism to do that. So I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's okay.
But procedurally, the variance is first.
So, okay, all right. So do we want to amend that motion to approve the variance? Do I have a similar second on that?
Yep.
Or any further discussion on the resolution approving the variance? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The variance is granted. I'd entertain a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
I'm moved.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The conditional use permit is granted. We're all off tonight, huh? Queen Crawford, no, Mrs. Crawford.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, members of the council. I want to clarify, because I, I think I heard something different from what maybe others heard, so I wanted to clarify. Does, do you intend to move 100% from the current location on Bald Eagle to Centerville?
Yes, we do currently have a lease, though, and we'd like to continue to have a lease until it ends.
Okay.
Right, and however, once the property at 4350 is ready, we would be moving as much of the operations we could there as soon as we could operate out of that location.
All right, okay. Can I ask when that lease is done?
We, there's three years left and a half.
Okay, okay. And then just wanted to, staff worked a lot during the zoning code update with the applicant. I know you were here for all of the council discussions. Staff worked a lot on this. I do support staff's recommendation over planning commission, it doesn't matter, but I do want to just say, state that, and, and staff has done a great job on the zoning code. This was a little bit of a tricky one. I know that you were part of the, the discussions and knew that a variance application would be coming forward, so happy to have it across the finish line in your favor, and, but staff, good job. Thank you.
Appreciate it, working with staff as well through the whole process. There's a lot to learn, and there's a lot that we were able to agree on, so.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Here, I thought we were almost done, but I forgot we moved two items. All right, item A8B canvassing results. Ms. Longendike.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. The White Bear Lake City Charter calls for a general municipal election on the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November in odd number of years. This year, the election was held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, with the mayor, Ward 2, and Ward 4 on the ballot. The abstract of votes cast has been provided by Ramsey County, who administers the city's elections, and has been distributed to you with the following candidates receiving the most votes. Mary Niklowski for the mayor's seat, Ellen Garola as council member for Ward 2, and Kevin Edberg as council member for Ward 4. As always, I would like to thank the Ramsey County election staff for administering the city's elections and being a great partner through these critical events. As the canvassing board for municipal elections, you are being presented with a resolution to canvass the votes for the 2025 general municipal election, with staff recommending you to approve. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Longendike. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Longendike, did we have any issues with, with elections administration this year that we would want to note, flag, pay attention to? Did anything pop up?
Councilmember Edberg, staff was not notified of any issues, so I would say no.
So there was one question about, we had two polling locations directly across the street from each other. Ward 3 was on the west side of Bel Air and, and Ward 4 was on the right, on the east side of Bel Air. The intersection had "vote here" signs pointing both directions. Was there any reports of confusion, or did that work out okay?
Councilmember Edberg, I did not hear of any issues. I would suspect that we would hear about that, and Ramsey County helps seek out those election polling locations, and if there was an issue or confusion, they would remedy that.
Okay, cool. I'm happy with that. I have one other question, and I don't need an immediate response. Do, would we, so if, if this has been something people have thought about, great, and if not, think about it and feedback. Would we, would the city save money if we went to even-year elections and combined our elections with, with regular elections in the even-years? Do we pay a premium for having our, our off-year elections? Does anybody know, have you done anything about that?
Mayor, councilmember Edberg, I have not given that thought. Would require a charter amendment, which is possible, but I have not given that thought. I, if I were to make an assumption, I would say we probably may perhaps save, save funds, but we could look into that if the council is interested in that.
So the reason I ask is, I'm looking at property tax assessments, and we're not getting a whole lot of relief. City is, and so I'm looking for all of the options. We may not choose to implement any of them, but I'm trying to understand the magnitude of various things that we could change in the way we do business and how much that might provide some cushion to our residents. Reduced expenditures comes with all kinds of trade-offs, and I'm not advocating for it, I'm just trying to get my head around what's the number? And what does that set of goodies that we are currently enjoying, how much does that cost us? Maybe not, maybe not much. I don't know, but that's my question. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is passed. All right, item 8C, resolution approving special event policy. Ms. Crawford, I believe you're taking this?
Yes, thank you, mayor and members of the council. White Bear Lake continues to be a popular location for a wide variety of events throughout the year. Community events bring vibrancy and economic activity to the city, but also require careful consideration, especially when involving city-owned property. consideration, especially when involving city-owned property and alcohol off-site from a licensed premises. Therefore, city staff has developed a special event policy for the city to use. The policy was designed to ensure that events held within the city are well-organized, successful, and of course, most importantly, safe for participants, attendees, and the broader community. The possible policy will also be used as a guide for consistent and efficient review of applications which comply with city, county, and state regulations. The policy before you outlines types of events requiring a permit, submission deadlines, regulations accompanying permits, and supporting documentation, as well as submission instructions. Really, this is everything that we are currently doing, but we do not have a policy to do that. So this is something that I looked at, quite frankly, about several years ago, and said we need to memorialize and solidify our practice. And so this is, this is doing just that. It's taken us a little while to get here, but need something in writing, and so that's what we are bringing forward tonight. So by implementing this policy, the city aims to support community engagement and economic development while maintaining public safety and minimizing disruptions to resident and business, residents and businesses. To ensure the procedures were easy to follow and use for applicants, staff did solicit feedback from Main Street and Market Fest, as they do currently submit many special event applications. So we did solicit their feedback. I also, I also should note that the policy was drafted mainly by my office, by the city clerk, but did solicit feedback from all of the departments that, that regularly review special event permits, which is, you know, fire, fire marshal, police, public works, engineering, and administration. So we've been working on this for a good nine months or so, and we are ready to bring it forward for council consideration. And so with that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, counsel. Any questions for Ms. Crawford? Councilmember Edberg?
I had two, and resolved, I think, most of them in conversation with the city manager Ms. Crawford, the, is it the intent of the administration that this policy apply to public demonstrations, protests, other kinds of, either planned or non-planned events that might involve constitutional rights to freedom of speech and freedom of assembly?
Mayor, councilmember Edberg, this policy does not aim to do that. It's that, those demonstrations and rallies and peaceful demonstrations have specifically not been included in this policy. We, of course, appreciate a heads-up and that we have been afforded that, and therefore Public Safety has been aware of over half of the demonstrations that have occurred in White Bear Lake, but this, they are not required to get a, a special event and that, so nothing would change on that front.
I would simply like the minister to reflect that, that statement, and I'm completely satisfied with that response. Thank you. So there is one piece of language, and, and you may want to tease out some nuance in the language, about the exclusive right or reservation of one entity. There is only one nonprofit entity that is, under the language, able to reserve the entire portion of the park, and that's Main Street. Nobody else gets that privilege. And so I raised that question, excuse me, the school district also has that question. And there's a nuance, I think, in the language that is worth noting and, and explaining. Could you share your, your comments about that?
Sure. Thank you. Mayor, councilmember Edberg, the park you're referring to is Railroad Park, and historically, since probably for the last thirty, forty years, the city's practice has been to limit the use of, limit the reservation of Railroad Park intentionally and for various reasons. And one of those reasons is that it's a central location, so we would like to allow everyone in the community to use that, and equally not limiting its use to private parties. In addition, the limited parking in downtown, you know, for businesses already would, would, would not support regular use of the park, of Railroad Park by large private groups. Again, not all parks in the city are rentable or reservable, and Railroad Park has traditionally been one of them. So we, I would not recommend allowing the gazebo in Railroad Park to be rentable. We do, as you said, allow Main Street to use that and in conjunction with events that, that actually don't compete with downtown businesses, and as well as the school district and coronation takes, takes place there. But you may recall several times on the consent agenda, the city council authorizes use of Railroad Park, and that's the exact reason. The city council doesn't authorize use of other city park reservations, but we historically have always brought that forward to city council for your review, and, and that, I believe, is the, the reason behind that.
So if somebody else other than Main Street wanted to have, have an event, whether it was an exclusive use or a non-exclusive use Railroad Park, is anybody else able to make use of that park under some type of a reservation system?
No.
And so the spontaneous folks walking by, able to enjoy the ambiance, but the only entities able to reserve that space are city and, excuse me, the school district and Main Street.
That's correct, as well as Manitou Days, events and Market Fest, yes.
And are all other uses that we grant permission for Railroad Park, though, we've had other events there, haven't we? Or they've all been sponsored by Main Street?
Mayor, councilmember Edberg, I believe they have all been sponsored by Main Street.
Okay. It struck me as an unfair, a segregation of use. Now, I'm not, I'm not going to die on that hill, but it's like, hmm, is it in, is it a fair, to use a public facility and restrict it to certain individuals and certain entities? Is that fair and reasonable to all the folks who pay to maintain it? And so that was, that's the equity question that I would raise. I don't feel the need to belabor it further tonight, but I did want to draw, draw attention to it.
Mayor, councilmember Edberg, if I could elaborate, it actually allows a very equitable use of that park by allowing the public to always use it versus allowing Lyndi Crawford and her family to exclusively use it and me say, you know, Mr. Juve, you're not allowed here, this is my party. But it allows it to be maintained as a public use year-round, and then the events that are, are supported by Main Street, Market Fest, and Manitou Days are obviously open to the public, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution before us that accepts the special use permit policy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, resolution is passed. Item nine, discussion, we have nothing scheduled. Item ten, communications from the city manager. Ms. Crawford?
Mayor, members of the council, just one thing tonight, I don't have any slides, but just one thing, speaking of Railroad Park, we are going to have our second annual holiday gazebo lighting that is open to the public, and Mr. Kapi talked about it, but that is next Wednesday from five to seven PM, and I believe Mayor Lewisbent will be kicking off things.
No, everybody should come join. I'm going to say nice things and then turn on a bunch of lights. It should be fun. All are welcome.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any questions for our city manager? All right, counsel, I know we have a work session, so I'll be really, really brief. High school students, welcome. Thank you for attending. Twenty-three years ago, I sat where you are for Mr. Malam's class, completing the same assignment. So we welcome you, we're glad you got out here with a relatively brief council meeting, an hour and a half, not too bad. You guys can give the three guys a hard time that slipped in twenty minutes late and then left almost an hour ago. Don't know what that's all about. But we hope you got, we hope you got something out of this. I'm biased, but to me, local government is, is a wonderful thing and the best layer of government because it's the things that touch your everyday life, like water, police, fire, ambulance, public works. We got to see all the things that public works does, the stuff behind the scenes, the unsung heroes that help provide the city services that make our everyday lives hum along nicely. So I would encourage you now or in the future, or twenty years from now, participate in local government in some way. You could run for office, you could volunteer for a board or for any of the civic groups that we have amongst the community, but please think seriously about participating in some way in local government. You won't regret it, and we, we thank you for being here. So as soon as we adjourn, you can come up and anyone on the dais can sign your pieces of paper. Thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned.